Well, on the basis of the chiming above us, ladies and gentlemen, I'll declare the meeting open and welcome. Even though the clock is slightly inaccurate, but we should never admit to that. First of all, apologies. We have apologies on the audit paper from councillors Bezett and Thompson and also from councillors Van Devis and Calvert. Moved Hawkins' second of stains, that they be sustained? Those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against no, that's agreed. And I'll move for the confirmation of the agenda in its existing form. I have a second of councillor Hawkins. Thank you. Those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against no, it's agreed. And draw members' attention to item three, should they wish to absent themselves. That will further expedite the conduct of the meeting. Item four then, the proposed legal high retail policy. If you, Adrian and Kevin would come up, we'll take questions. Thank you for this. It's good to have... Oh, in response to your request, thank you very much. All right. Who'd like to start? Do you want to say anything before we take questions, Adrian and Kevin?
No.
I think this has been a long time coming, we know why. And it would be good if we didn't have to deal with government's responsibilities, but unfortunately we do. So, questions? Andrew.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Could you just explain the dialogue that's occurred with both the police and district health board, whether it's Public Health South or whoever, to get to this point? So, I imagine there's been some stakeholder dialogue. So, I just wanted to understand those conversations as this report was compiled.
Right. Kevin?
I asked the medical officer of health for a report on psychoactive substances in our community last year. They compiled a report that, I think was circulated last year sometime. The police, we discussed, they were more concerned about the beggars outside these premises that were selling the product. When the products were withdrawn from, or their interim licences were revoked, the beggars sort of disappeared. I forwarded the draft policy to both MOH and the police. The police would have preferred the approved areas to be in the more commercial industrial areas, get away from the main streets. And the medical officer of health just wanted reference to legal highs removed and substituted for psychoactive substances. But generally speaking, they were quite happy with what was there. I explained to the police that the idea of having the premises in a higher pedestrian density area was for the natural passive surveillance of people, so they can't sort of just go away and do their own thing. And they haven't responded to that.
Just to follow up with regards to the police and their view or opinion on, just looking at the maps, and clearly there's an area in Rattray Street that has been highlighted where potentially, depending on this consultation process, could be an approved area. Did they make any comment with regards to the suitability of that area?
No, they didn't. And just looking at it, that's probably where Spats Brewery is. I don't think there's any residential activity apart from up above Cannon Gate and that area.
Your worship. Look, I'm just slightly concerned with the approved location boundary, which at one level is quite detailed in that you've gone in and out of buildings, obviously. So, if I look at Smith Street, for example, the north end, north side, you've gone, you've done a property inclusion exclusion, but it's not absolutely clear, this doesn't give the clarity of which properties are in or out. And whether, if you are going to do a fine-tooth comb and have those edges, why you actually have, for example, Knox Church, which obviously is a sensitive area included in this map, when you're not going to be having it sold there. There seems to be, at one level, a fine-tooth comb, and at the other, some quite odd inclusions. Can you explain how that happened?
I hadn't noticed that little step in, but GIS were asked to prepare these maps based on the central activity zone, I think it is, as it is now. And that's what came back. They went back to policy people.
Okay. I'll come back with my question after.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. I ask this in advance, but probably for the benefit of the meeting, and the definitions under the policy, psychoactive substances defined as anything, literally anything that has a psychoactive effect, which would limit the sale of, for example, coffee and alcohol to a fairly small area of our central business district, were it taken to its logical conclusion. But we can tighten that definition, I understand, in the policy?
Yes, we could refer to the policy to the definition as applied in the Act itself. That has some exclusions from what's classified as psychoactive substances.
When we get to the debate, I'm just proposing that the question you raised, which has been copied to the secretary, will be to link the definition with the Act, so there's no confusion. And Zaniedon residents will still be able to buy coffee in most of the city, should they wish. Councillor Lord? Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
You haven't finished.
No.
Carry on then.
Very rarely. Under the, just in the statement of proposal, given that we can't, as is outlined in the paper, ban the sale of approved products or put in place something that is effectively a ban by stealth, I wonder how useful it is to list 'doesn't meet community desire for a ban' as a con under the various options in there? Because if we can't do that, then, I mean, and which we should be upfront in that paper, but I just, I wonder what the justification is for then further including that as part of the options discussion?
I hadn't considered it.
Through Mr Chair was really to try and make that more clear in the statement of proposal, that's not available.
But we could also add in that section that it is not possible if you are going to repeat that information. Would that be useful?
Yes, yes, we could.
One more, if I may. In two parts, what do you see as the prime objective of limiting, or, you know, limiting the available area with which these products could potentially be sold?
I think by limiting them is to try and minimise the exposure to the more vulnerable people in the community, like the younger people, people with, dare I say, mental health issues and addiction issues. So, it's just, we can't prevent them from being sold, but to try and put them in locations that sort of are a bit less accessible than other areas.
Because, I mean, the challenge for us is obviously that we're setting this policy in advance of any such thing existing, rather than, we can't base this on products that had previously been on the market. Anything that would eventually be on the market will have passed the low, quote-unquote, 'low harm' test to be approved for sale. So, on what, on what grounds are we basing potential harm on our community if we don't know what these products are and they are such that they have passed that low harm test?
Yeah, the Act acknowledges that these substances do cause harm to the user, but they're trying to minimise the amount of harm. I was talking to some of the treatment providers and a research consultant just after the Act came in, and contrary to what everyone thought would happen when the Act came in, the number of presentations for harm reduced with the introduction of the Act. I haven't chased that up since the interim approvals were withdrawn. I haven't chased up to see whether the number of presentations has increased again, but certainly with the introduction of the Act, it didn't have the effect that the treatment providers thought it would have. It was actually quite a positive effect.
No doubt such evidence will come forward as part of this process.
I'd imagine through the consultation thing, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Lord?
Yeah, Kevin, I've just got a question. It's probably, well, there's two questions. One of them is probably a wee bit off task, but is there a market at the moment for these products that have gone since they've been banned? Do you think there's a below ground market happening already?
Yeah, it's quite interesting. There are five premises in the city that are selling products that don't have psychotic substances in them, and apparently they're doing quite well. So, yeah, once the approved products come in, I'd imagine there'd be quite a market.
Yep. And the other question is, what happens in the situation if we, if someone applies for licence and they get into a restricted or into an area where it's okay, and then for some reason or another, a new church next door or something, does, do they have a priority after they've been established or? So, if, you know what I mean? Like, if you get a legitimate area where someone can successfully start one of these businesses, and then the circumstances change that would otherwise have disqualified them beforehand?
They've got to renew their licence, I think, every three years, and the policy needs to be reviewed. I put that question to the authority, and their legal person suggested we speak to our legal person.
So, we don't know whether or not?
We don't know.
If someone was really anti it, they could actually start a childcare centre on every corner as well, or?
Mayor Culbitt?
Yeah, going back to your point that the area was set out to restrict the risk to vulnerable people, there was some commentary made under the previous regime that the area, if you like, south of Rattray Street contained a number of boarding houses that house people, some people that would be considered vulnerable. Do you think that there's a case to be made for pulling that south line up, say to Rattray Street, restricting it?
Yeah, I asked one of the treatment providers if he could give details of where these places were, and he said that that would compromise the people living in them, so he wouldn't, he wouldn't give it, but he would prefer to see, say, 500 metres as opposed to 100 metre boundary to sort of try and take it in. But he didn't want to give locations of those places so we could plot them on that sort of thing.
So, does that mean we're in a position where we're trying to reduce risk to people, but we don't want to compromise them, so we can't reduce the risk to them?
Yeah, that's, as I understood...
Doesn't make a great deal of sense, does it? So, I'll go back to the point, regardless of what the advice was, if we're setting out the perimeters of this area in order to reduce the risk to vulnerable people, should we not consider bringing the southern boundary of it up, for instance, to Rattray Street? Because we, it doesn't matter where the individual places are, we know that there are, and the commentary was made when the shop was open in Lower Prince's Street, that it was close to where some, quite a number of vulnerable people lived. So, I'm suggesting that we alter the map effectively.
So, we'd be perfectly able to do that in terms of the area on the map?
I think so.
Or you might like, your worship, to move an amendment to that effect in due course, right? Next is councillor Wylie.
Thank you. Kevin, I sent you through some questions, and one of them was about hours of operation. Were you able to find out if there was any restrictions?
Yes, I sent an email away to the authority, and they said that the LAPP could not stipulate hours of operation. However, when they contacted the territorial authority advising of an application, we could make a recommendation to them. But we can't actually state any hours in the LAPP itself.
So, for example, we could even follow it on with the lap, 9am to 9pm?
Yeah.
Okay. And, so dairies have guidelines on how they can sell cigarettes. Will these retailers have any guidelines on how they have to display or cover or?
Yeah, the regulations have cover off how the, regulations? No, section 56 describes how they can be advertised. They can't be advertised where they can be easily viewed from the street. They can only be viewed inside, and the advertising's really limited to the name of the product and what's in it.
Okay. So, it would be, the retailer would be more like a liquor store versus a dairy selling cigarettes?
Yeah, probably more so because they must be R18 stores, so you can't have a person under 18, and the seller must also be at least 18 years, which is quite different to Self Alcohol Act.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Wilson?
Yeah? Those concerns that you expressed, but I'm just wondering if, as I look on the map that you've got, you've actually got quite a few laneways and everything, and the potential that one of these shops could be potentially up a laneway, which undermines absolutely every reason why you've chosen this area, really. And I'm just wondering if, you know, if we should be more particular that it should be shop front and edge with CCTV cameras? Because that, I mean, isn't that really what you're saying is going to be the best and safest way of selling this stuff? And the second question is, you talked about poor sites selling this now, I think. Are these within, will they comply with these rules?
One of them does, the others won't.
Is that because of location outside of the area or because they're near the sensitive?
They're near sensitive sites.
Okay. I mean, I have to say that when I've circled what I do know, and it depends whether the High Court in Stewart Street is a justice premises or not at the moment, you actually preclude quite a lot of this area functioning or being able to be accessed by natural churches and things, under that sensitive rule. Okay.
Councillor Tavish?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I have three questions. The first is just in relation to the conversation I had with councillor Hawkins earlier around Pact, which is in Filial Street. It doesn't appear to have a circle around it on the map.
I saw that after this was submitted.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, we could move an amendment, let that be recognised on the map? I just think full information, because it does impact on, it's Filial Street, according to the website.
It's the bottom of Cargill Street.
So, anyway, that's one thing. Second thing, corridors, or, and I guess this comes back to the question that the mayor asked, when there are a number of people who use these services, that will, it's likely that they will be walking in certain directions, along certain access corridors, to and from these places. Was that considered in the work that you did at all? Or, so if I was arriving on a bus and my nearest bus stop was in location X, and I was going to this mental health facility, or that was the likely?
No, it wasn't considered because the policy can't be so restrictive as to be an exclusion.
And that would have had that effect?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then I guess, just following up on councillor Noon's question about the police, their preference for locations in more commercial, or I think you said industrial areas, did they explain why that was? What was the basis of that preference? No. Okay, thank you.
All right. Councillor Peet?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just one question around what other councils might be doing at this time, and presumably they're in a situation of looking at, as we are, at forming a policy before November. But do you know what's happening? I mean, what I'm driving at here is that maybe there are more liberal policies being approached just across our boundaries, which wouldn't, might, yeah, I'm just, do you know the approach of other councils to this issue?
Yeah, not the councils around us, I don't think they've got policies as yet, because they're not a mandatory thing, but most of them have 100 metre exclusion zone around sensitive sites.
Yeah.
Some have, or they range between 100 and 500 metres around other retailers of the substances. Auckland, and their schools differentiate between years seven and up, being 500 metre exclusion, and those in the junior schools only a 200 metre exclusion. So, there's a bit of variation around the place, but like Auckland with their distances, I think, it sort of reflects the size of the city itself, the distances between things. Whereas like Kapten Coast, it's sort of 100 metres, similar to what we proposed here, went sort of similar scale.
Okay. And just one last, one last question about the retail licence applications will not be considered before November, I take it? Is that right, by the Regent's Authority?
No.
And, and our involvement after setting this policy is zero?
No, the, whenever the authority receive an application, they'll contact us to ask if it complies with the LAPP.
Right.
And then we give that advice back, which sort of makes it a fluid document, I suppose, like councillor Lord saying, you know, if a childcare or something like that popped up. At the moment, it's not, but at the time, the licence is likely to be approved. We consider it at that point, so it would be sort of like a dynamic policy rather than one set.
Would we have a veto on it or just simply?
We just advise the, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Between July of last year and May of this year, after the products came off the market, so-called legal highs came off the market, ESR have analysed 15 samples of synthetic cannabinoids, 13 of which have come from police, 13 of which are a plant material, quote-unquote, that are being sold on the black market, various forms of chemicals absorbed into plant matter, et cetera. In your conversations with police, are you aware of any of those being traded into need?
No, not legitimately, and I haven't asked about the illegitimate market, illicit market.
Thanks. Councillor Wylie?
Kevin, would a neighbouring business have the ability to veto or protest a store going next to them?
I haven't seen that in the regulations, I don't think the public, the advertisers are just...
Is that by legislation, or could we put that into a? Okay.
Councillor Wilson?
I'm just going and thinking further on your map on page 414. The yellow area around the, just for clarity, I think you've got the large yellow area, the second one down from the top, for the police station, that isn't covered by the Ministry of Justice, that is New Zealand Police. Do you intend that New Zealand Police be included in your sensitive areas?
They are another area.
Okay, but it's just your wording says Ministry of Justice and Social Development. But maybe the safest place to sell it, on the other hand? If you want CCTV coverage and, oh, I mean, is that actually not being, if, I take myself back to the days when I did the gambling review, and a problem that we thought that when FPOS machines seemed to be literally sitting outside gambling facilities, and while that irked us, it wasn't something we could deal with. I'm just wondering if, in developing this policy, we've decided we don't really want something, and so we're going to make it as impossible as possible to get it, and whether that's actually realistic, whether this would withstand that test that we've effectively said you can do it, but you barely can, and whether we've been slightly hypersensitive in this policy. What, where did you get your 100 metres from, really? I mean, 100 metres is quite a long way.
What other centres are doing, 100 seem to be there at all.
Okay. Because I actually think if I was going to turn this round, and my other question is, why wouldn't you consider having it where you have the best access to the protection that you need if there are problems? And we all know that there have been problems associated with in this past, and say, actually, we want this near to where we know that people can turn up quickly. We know that the CCTV camera's here, we know that the police are handy and they're 24/7 there. Why don't we say that that's a better area to do it in, rather than do it by exclusion? It was, the question is, could you, you've obviously discounted that as a thought? Why?
It was just, like, the place right there, it's surrounded by exclusion areas.
No, no, but you could have said, we can do this as long as it's within 100 metres of the police station and where you've got CCTV. That would have been a different way of saying? Okay.
All right. Well, we've run out of questions, so let's go to the recommendations, and I'll move the first one. Now, there's obviously going to be some amendments. The first one is councillor Hawkins' suggestion that we refine the definition of psychoactive substances to align it with the comment in the Act. You know, we've got that available on the screen if you want to see that, but it's entirely, I think entirely sensible and straightforward. Do you want to talk to that, Aaron? Got a second of that then? Several. Councillor Peet was first. No discussion? Do people want to see the wording? Yes, please. So, this is the definition and the Act, all right? That we, yeah, that we, the definition and the policy and the proposal becomes directly linked with the definition and the Act. All right?
Kevin, is that, can we just not say within the policy that we just, it's defined as per psychoactive substances? We don't have to put that in, do we?
No, we just have to amend the proposals to refer to, the definition in the Act.
So, we don't have to include all of that? Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, I'll put it, those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against no? That's agreed unanimously. You're happy? Now, do you wish, your worship, to move the amendment you were foreshadowing perhaps in relation to a southern boundary?
Yes, so I would suggest that we draw the approved location boundary so that the southern limit is Rattray Street between McTaggany Street and Queen's Gardens.
Right. That includes Rattray Street? Where is the boundary?
The middle of Rattray Street.
In the middle of Rattray Street. Well, I don't mind, but...
No, no.
So, it's, it has to be, so we're talking about to the north-east of Rattray Street and Queen's Gardens. So, we, one side of Rattray Street. Does that amendment have a second of? Yes, it does. Councillor Noon? Discussion on that amendment? There appears to be none. Those in favour, do you want to write a reply? Or do you want to speak in favour of it?
I hadn't spoken to them, but I mentioned it before. For that, if the purpose of this limit is to reduce risk to vulnerable people, then we want to keep the points of sale away from where we know vulnerable people will be, and we know that that area, despite the fact that some of those circles pretty much take out the area anyway, we know that that is an area from past experience that is lived in by vulnerable people or frequented by vulnerable people, so better to put it there.
All right, I'll put it, those in favour, please say aye. Against no? That's agreed. And that takes us back to the substant...
There's one more, sorry.
Oh. Oh, there's B, you mean?
No, my, the amendment to schedule one, the second map showing sensitive sites, is at mid 2015. I'd just like to move that Pact be identified on that map and included for the purpose of consultation.
Sorry, can you, the what B?
That Pact, which is a.
Okay, yep.
Service agency.
Seconded, discussion? Those in favour, please say aye. Against no, that's agreed. So subject to those amendments and any minor editorial detail, so that bits and pieces can be sorted, we go back to the amended motion A. Any further discussion? Those in favour, please say aye. Against no, that's agreed. And, Mr Mayor, you wanted to move B?
Yes, I'll move B, that the councillor points a hearing subcommittee comprising councillors Benson, Park, Hawkins, Wylie and Law.
Seconded, seconded by councillor McTavish, discussion? Those in favour, please say aye. Against no, that's agreed. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the work on this, both of you, Kevin in particular. It has taken a long time, and there's no doubt about the concern in the community, and it is an odd situation, as councillor Hawkins indicated, with the approval process as yet really undemonstrated or untested. That takes us to item five, are there any matters that people wish to raise with the Chair? In which case, I thank you for your attendance, and declare the meeting closed. Have a safe, warm afternoon.